Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of the 7th of May, 2018. Please join us in a pledge of allegiance and followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business today is the Mayor's Annual Award of Excellence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, sir.
It is the annual award. This is the big one for 2017. I think you're all familiar with the process. In January, all the monthly nominees and the winners from the previous year are considered again for the annual award. The nominations, as you'll recall, are reviewed by a committee, a committee that includes representatives from each of our unions and a non-union representative. And if there are any committee members here today, I'd like them to stand and be recognized. Are there some committee members here? Uh-huh. Okay.
There they are.
All right. Don't be reluctant. They were wonderful nominees. I'd also like to recognize any of the 2017 monthly nominees and winners who are present. Would they please stand and be recognized if they're here today? Obviously, congratulations to all of them for all their hard work on behalf of the city of Lincoln. We're going to begin today with the Honorable Mention Award, which goes to Police Officer Lana Groves. She's been with the Lincoln Police Department since 1995, nominated in the categories of productivity and safety by forensic lab manager Erin Sims for her work on three specific cases, which led to the clearance of a total of six armed robberies and four gun store burglaries. Officer Groves is a certified latent print examiner through the International Association for Identification. Latent prints are one of three categories of fingerprints that may be found at the scene of a crime. Her work with the latent prints solved the cases. Sims says numerous officers and investigators did good work on the cases, but she wrote, Officer Groves provided the missing pieces that gave investigators the information they needed to focus their investigation and resources on the parties responsible in stopping these criminals from additional crimes, of course. This is just one example of Officer Groves' hard work to keep the community safe. Please join me in congratulating Lana Graves, our 2017 Honorable Mention Award recipients. Lana? Chief, you wanted to say a few words, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor. And once again, congratulations to Lana. And Erin Sims is here today. I saw her before. She's back there. This is, we are so fortunate at the Lincoln Police Department to have support services that are provided in the forensic ID lab. And the work that Lana and her coworkers do is just instrumental to being able to corroborate the criminal cases that become, that come in front of us. But more importantly, the things that you heard about put some very dangerous and violent people behind bars so they don't continue that victimization. And they should be very proud of their work. And Lana, congratulations.
Today, I did bring my husband with me, Todd Groves. I just want to say it's a pleasure to be a part of the Lincoln Police Department and City of Lincoln team. So, thank you. And I am just humbled by this honor. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. And now, it's my honor to present the annual Mayor's Award of Excellence to Investigator Matthew Franken of the Central Investigation Division of the Police Department, nominated in the category of productivity by Sergeant Mike Ripley for his work on a homicide investigation that led to the arrest of eight different people, including, of course, the person responsible for the homicide. In December of 2016, police responded to a report of a disturbance and found the body with a gunshot wound to the head. Matt interviewed two women arrested at the scene on narcotics violations, quickly built a rapport with one of the women, learned the name of one man and the nickname of another who had fled the scene. He also established the address of the shooting and got the search warrant to look for the relevant information. With the woman's information, Matt worked with the U.S. Marshals Fugitive Task Force to locate the known male suspect in Omaha. He was returned to Lincoln. Matt interviewed the suspect and confirmed the other suspect's nickname, and the captured suspect was then arrested for being an accessory to the murder. Matt contacted a colleague at the Omaha Police Department to see if he could identify the man with the nickname and next. And that suspect was quickly identified, which led to surveillance of the home where the homicide occurred. The suspect was soon spotted leaving the home with several others. The officers attempted to stop the vehicle, which led to a short pursuit and a lengthy manhunt after the suspect drove the vehicle into Little Salt Creek. As a direct result of the information Matt collected, the second suspect was arrested for second-degree murder, and seven others were subsequently arrested for accessory to murder. Matt's follow-up investigation included seven search warrants, the collection of 12 different DNA samples, and many, many interviews. He also worked with other law enforcement agencies and prosecutors to build cases against the primary suspect. In addition to his investigation, Matt also has been a driving force in creating departmental policy on officer-involved shootings. In his nomination, Ripley wrote, "With these types of high-profile investigations, the potential for civil unrest within a community is significant." Thanks to Matt's dedication on the subject, the Lincoln Police Department is well-prepared to handle this type of event and avoid a high-profile situation that could cause civil unrest in the community. For his outstanding service to the community, it's my pleasure to present the annual Mayor's Award of Excellence in 2017 to Matt Franken. He gets $250, two days off work with pay and a plaque. So, please join me in congratulating Matt on his award.
Well, present with us today, and I'm Matt, I'll introduce his family, but also many of Matt's peers that he works with every day have come to support him. And I'd really like for them to stand up, for those of you that work with Matt every day. Similar to the comments when I talked about Lana, when we look at the quality of the employees that work for all of you that are faced with these unthinkable events and work them so thoroughly and with such passion, it just continues to amaze me. You know, there's been other very high-profile incidents that Matt has been involved in since this particular occasion and his award. And the patterns continue. And the sacrifices that he makes, that his coworkers make, that his family makes, are what we should truly applaud. So, Matt, thank you.
First and foremost, I'd like to extend my condolences to Jamie Watson's family, the victim of the case that we're talking about here. I'm very proud to be a member of Team Three. In my wildest dreams, I've never dreamt of being a part of a group of people like this that produce the kind of work that they produce every day quietly and with good conscience every night we all go home. I'm proud to be a part of the Lincoln Police Department, and I want to thank all of you
Yes.
Lamb?
for building the city that you've built here for us all to live and work in.
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Each year, the Lincoln City Council passes a number of improvement district ordinances. Do you have family here with you? Today, we are here to equalize the assessments for each, for several such districts.
I do. Thank you.
One more thing, Matt, if we could.
The College View Maintenance District, the Havelock Street Maintenance District, the North 27th Street Maintenance District, the South Street Business Improvement District, the University Place Maintenance District, and the West O Street Business Improvement
With this annual presentation, we like to present to the people who are so deserving
District.
the medallion of the City of Lincoln.
The land described in each district is benefited by the improvements in the particular district.
We hope you enjoy it, and thank you again for your service.
The cost of these districts is paid by the city through its special assessment revolving Thank you. All right. We'll give you folks who don't really want to stay for the rest of this meeting an opportunity fund. It is then necessary for the city to recoup its costs from the benefited property owners and reimburse its revolving fund. These costs or assessments are computed by the Urban Development Department and presented to leave.
There's a reception.
to the city council for its review when sitting as the Board of Equalization as we are now.
That's right.
The clerk will read the description of the district.
Yeah, we miss this reception always.
After the district is read, a representative from the Urban Development Department will Upstairs, what floor?
Second floor.
Second-floor reception right now to honor the award recipients. come forward to make a brief statement about the district. Then, anyone wishing to testify may come forward. And if you do testify, please sign the pink signup sheets at the podium after completing Okay. Now, we will, are convening now to discuss the assess, Board of Equalization meeting. your testimony.
All right.
I will point out that a copy of, in accordance with LB 898, a copy of the open meetings law
We have the College View Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extending from South 48th Street between Calvert and Pioneers, the Havelock Street Maintenance Business Improvement
is posted at the back of this chamber. The first order of business of the Board of Equalization is the election of a chair.
District generally extending from Havelock Avenue from Cornhusker Highway on the west
I nominate Roy Christensen.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Jane.
to 64th Street on the east, the North 27th Street Maintenance Business Improvement District
Discussion, please call the roll.
Schob? generally extending from North 26th Street on the west to North 28th Street on the east,
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge? and from the centerline of O Street on the north to Fair Street on the south, primarily including those properties abutting North 27th Street. The South Street Business Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extending from South Street from the alley west of 9th Street east to 19th Street. The University Place Maintenance Business Improvement District generally extending along North 48th Street from Colby Street on the south to the half-block north of Adams Street on the north, and along St. Paul Avenue from North 47th Street to North 50th Street. And finally, the West O Street Maintenance Business Improvement District generally along West O Street from 3rd Street on the east to Homestead Expressway on the west, and including the property abutting the north and south sides of said West O Street right-of-way.
Good afternoon. I'm Ron Kane with the Urban Development Department, and the assessments before you today are for the time period January 1 of 2017 through December 31st of 2017. And I'm here today to answer any questions you may have regarding the calculations.
Questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, sir. Would anyone like to testify on these items? Please come forward now if you'd like to testify on any of these business improvement districts. Very good.
All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to assess them as they stand.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Larian. Discussion, please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Chair, I move, we adjourn, signee die.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We will now move into the regular city council meeting. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item, and please remember to sign in after you testify. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and then on items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item?
Yes. Before I do, we would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item of business is a hazmat appeal hazardous materials cleanup fee for TCW Construction Services.
Is someone here representing TCW? Okay.
Well, with that, I don't know if the council wants any additional information, but I'm Elizabeth Elliott with the City Attorney's Office on behalf of the Lincoln Fire and Rescue Department. I handle the appeals for hazmat cleanup recovery costs that are being appealed. TCW did submit two appeals which have been attached to the agenda, and so the council members, you should all have those. They do have information submitted by TCW, so you do have a statement from them there. On this, basically, is state law sets certain guidelines for utility people to mark their utility lines. In this case, the utility company was Black Hills Energy. They did properly mark their utility line. TCW's position was that they should have been told the depth of those lines. The state law does not require the utility companies to tell you the depth, only that it is within two-feet boundaries. Ultimately, the line was hit by a TCW worker. LFR did submit a bill to them. At this point, they have not paid. Instead, they have appealed to you. We would ask the council to affirm the billing that was submitted to them, and I would submit with that.
Any questions? Jane?
Does the contractor have a level of expectation as to the depth the lines are customarily and normally situated?
Not all of the time. In this case, at least in one of the cases, there was some email discussions back and forth between TCW, Black Hills, and then ultimately with an employee from the City of Lincoln. In that case, I do believe Black Hills did indicate that the lines were buried two feet or deeper. This was merely a, a street grading project where they basically were digging up the already existing concrete. Turns out that the gas line was a little more shallow than two feet as they thought and expected. However, again, that, under state law, they don't have to tell them the depth. I believe that was more of courtesy or general practice, maybe locally. The City of Lincoln has no authority in determining how they have to be marked, the depth of those lines, et cetera. That all falls under state law.
Should they have had an expectation of the utility company to come out and facilitate when they raise some concerns about that depth?
No. The, the, the duty falls on the contractor, and they do a practice that they call potholing. And what they do is every so many feet, they have to dig a little hole, see if they can find the utility line, and then just keep working as they progress down the line. So, the duty is on the contractor rather than the utility company or the city.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Any questions for staff? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that rather than vote today, we have our actual vote on May 14th.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Cindy, that we have our vote on May 14th. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, so is that delay to allow the applicant to?
No, it's to allow us to think about it before we vote.
Yeah, this would be without any public hearing.
Yeah. No public hearing. I don't think so, no.
Unless there's a desire.
Well, I think if it were really important to the applicant, they might have been here. Unless we hear differently, so. Okay. Please call the roll on the motion to delay voting.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then, items 1D and I and 2A were introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Jane. Discussion, please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. We have one item. It is the application of Lincoln Holdings Limited, doing business as Yaw-Yaws to expand its sidewalk café area to approximately nine feet by 50 feet at 1423 O Street.
Good afternoon.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Nader Sapapour.
And your address?
3245 West Summit Boulevard.
Okay. Tell us about your application today.
Just enlarging an existing sidewalk café, hopefully into create a better environment in front of that. I bought the building next door in the process of remodeling it, not to a bar, not to a restaurant, and this is just an extension of the sidewalk in front of this new building.
Okay. Other questions? Cindy, and then John?
So, is it my understanding, then, that it will go, won't, won't go out any further end of the sidewalk? Just why?
It is, it is, it continues on the same.
Okay.
Same width as the previous.
Thank you.
John? Out of curiosity, does the legal description include both properties, or are they two separate properties, and does that affect your liquor license?
We started on that track. We thought it would simplify things, but it would require me to sprinkle the existing business, so we kind of scratched the building, so we're just doing the sidewalk. And whatever I do on the, in the interior of the, of the additional building will not require liquor license, maybe in special designated times.
Okay. Other questions? I have a staff question. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Much, sir?
Thank you. Thank you. And the city attorney? Yes, sir. And Mr. Kirkpatrick, my question is, since it is two separate properties, is that possible to have a same liquor license extend on two different properties?
Well, this is a...
Sidewalk café.
Right. Sidewalk café. And there's a provision in our city code to extend a sidewalk café as long as there's a leasehold. And so, the fact that they're two...
And he owns both buildings.
He owns both buildings, but if he would sell it under the existing lease that's provided in the packet, he could continue to operate the sidewalk café as well, because there's an agreement between, in this case, it's himself, but there's still an agreement that would allow the extension of the sidewalk café.
I realize it's a sidewalk café, but you also have then, I assume, the service of alcohol.
Yes.
And that involves the State Liquor Commission. I'm just doing this, asking for his protection, that because it's on two different legal properties, I guess I'm, don't recall a situation where someone's had a liquor license on two different properties. I just begin want to protect him.
Well, I don't know of any bar that would prevent him from doing that under the state law.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of this item.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Larian. Discussion, please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. Items 5A, approving Carrier Entertainment LLC, doing business as Nowhere Bar as a Keno Satellite located at 2050 Cornhusker Highway.
Members of the council, my name's Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located in Omaha, Nebraska. I have with me today Dan Carrier. He's the owner of the Nowhere Bar. This is an existing Keno Satellite location already. It's just an ownership change, and we're here to ask for the approval of that ownership change.
Other questions? Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 5B, approving a grant application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response or SAFER grant that will provide match-based funding for LFR.
Tom Cassidy, Director of Public Safety, and with me for the difficult questions is Fair Chief Mike De Spain. We'd like to tell you a little bit about this resolution that we've asked you to consider. Lincoln Fire and Rescue is eligible to apply for a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The grant program is called SAFER Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. It's been in existence for many years. We've used SAFER grants in the past to defray... And whatever I do on the, in the interior of the, of the additional building will not require liquor license, maybe in special designated times.
Okay, other questions? I have a staff question. Okay. Much, sir?
Thank you, thank you.
And the city attorney?
Yes, and Mr. Kirkpatrick, my question is, since it is two separate properties, is that possible to have a same liquor license extend on two different properties?
Well, this is a.
Sidewalk Cafe.
Right, sidewalk cafe, and there's a provision in our city code to extend a sidewalk cafe as long as there's a leasehold. And so.
And he owns both buildings.
He owns both buildings, but um, if he would sell it under the existing lease that's provided in the packet, he could continue to operate the sidewalk cafe as well because there's an agreement between, this case it's himself, but there's still an agreement that would allow the extension of the sidewalk cafe.
I realize sidewalk cafe, but you also have then this, I assume, the service of alcohol.
Yes.
And that involves the State Liquor Commission. I'm just doing this, asking for his protection that because it's on two different legal properties, I guess I'm, don't recall a situation where someone's had a liquor license on two different properties. Um, extent, I just begin want to protect him.
Well, I don't know of any bar that would prevent him from doing that under the state law.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of this item.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Larian, discussion? Please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next then, our public hearing resolutions. Item five A, approving Carrier Entertainment LLC, doing business as Nowhere Bar as a Keno Satellite located at twenty-fifty Cornusker Highway.
Members of the council, my name's Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located in Omaha, Nebraska. I have with me today Dan Carrier, he's the owner of the Nowhere Bar. This is an existing Keno Satellite location already, it's just an ownership change and we're here to ask for the approval of that ownership change.
Other questions? Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item five B, approving a grant application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response or safer grant that will provide match-based funding for LFR.
Tom Cassidy, Director of Public Safety, and with me for the difficult questions is Fair Chief Mike De Spain. We'd like to tell you a little bit about this resolution that we've asked you to consider. Lincoln Fire and Rescue is eligible to apply for a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The grant program is called Safer Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. It's been in existence for many years. We've used safer grants in the past to defray some of the cost of adding firefighters here in Lincoln. And we are suggesting that the city apply for a grant this year in the event that the city council and/or the mayor should decide during your budget process that you want to add firefighters. Unfortunately, the federal fiscal year and the city's fiscal year don't line up. Our fiscal year, as you know, starts on September first. The federal fiscal year starts on October first. So we're in the position of having to make decisions on adding firefighters in the city's budget and applying for a safer grant that sometimes creates a very tight timeline or even a conflict. I checked and last year, grant announcements for safer grants began in mid-July. I think the first ones were awarded on July fourteenth. The last ones, however, weren't awarded until September twenty-second. So, you know, there is a possibility that we would be notified of a grant award either before or after the council has taken final action on, on the, on the city's budget. One of the concepts I need the city council to understand is the concept of supplanting. Federal regulations prevent us from using a, a federal grant to supplant money that's already budgeted. So, for example, if we were awarded a safer grant, we couldn't use those dollars to replace the funding that has already been budgeted for firefighters here in Lincoln. And the reason this could be somewhat problematic is if the city council were to decide to add a few firefighters to Lincoln Fire and Rescue and took a final vote on that, adopted that budget, and then a few weeks later, we were notified of a, of a grant award, you wouldn't be able to use that grant award to offset the cost that we've already budgeted for adding those firefighters. That would be supplanting and that's illegal. However, the match money could be budgeted, what's necessary for the match, and that would not constitute supplanting. So Mike and I are prepared to address any questions you might have. We tried to write a very simple resolution here that would satisfy the requirements of FEMA to have some kind of a commitment from the city. I want to point out, however, that we did include some language on page two, it's the next to last paragraph, to make it clear that although this is her, her commitment at this point to accept a grant if it were awarded, that is contingent upon the city's constraints and its budget process.
Okay, questions? John?
Could you detail a little bit more what the constraints are, the strings that are attached to the federal grant?
Well, the main, the main constraint is the match. We have to provide a match for, it's a three-year grant. The first two years, the grant would pay seventy-five percent of the normal salary and benefits of a firefighter at the time the application was filed. The third year, the grant doesn't cover as much, it only covers thirty-five percent of the cost in the third year. So we're committed for that level of staffing for three years if we receive an award and accept the award. There is no ongoing commitment after the end of the third year. This is different than some of the grants that, that I've been here testifying about before from the Department of Justice, the, the cops grants, which have an ongoing commitment for a full fiscal year, but that's not the case with safer grants. So our commitment's twenty-five percent of salary and benefits for the first year, the second year, sixty-five percent for the third year.
Does this impact future grants, though, if we would suddenly end this and then want to add a firefighter later and get other funding or grants?
Um, we don't know. Mike and I have discussed this a little bit and we think that if we have a record of applying for grants and then turning them down at the eleventh hour, that eventually that might catch someone's attention at FEMA who might decide to move on to another applicant. These are competitive grants. I don't think anyone would ever tell us that specifically that that was the case. I can't imagine that it couldn't be something that, that figures into the, the award process at some point, however. I do think that the federal government and FEMA have, have got to have similar situations where they have other cities that apply for these grants that have the same dilemma of fiscal year that doesn't match the federal fiscal year. And it's, it's rather interesting to me that some of these grants were awarded until very late in the, in the current federal fiscal year, you know, September twenty-second. So I, I know that this is a situation that they, they must encounter from time to time.
So in that case, if this doesn't, you apply and the approval came in September twenty-second, which is after we adopt the budget, then you couldn't use it because we'd already adopted the budget?
Well, if, we, we could use it if, if, if we had already budgeted the, the funds or had the funds available in some other mechanism to pay for the match, we could accept the grant award. If, however, you added firefighters and voted on that budget and then we received the award, you couldn't then use the federal grant funds to offset the, the, the cost of those firefighters that were added to the budget.
If we were to add a firefighter, could we make it contingent upon having the safer grant?
Legal question I'd want to ask law about, John, whether, whether, I, I, I think, I, I think if we were to do that, if we were to, if we were to say, okay, we're going to add firefighters to the budget and we're going to budget the money necessary for that, contingent upon receiving the grant, if we've already budgeted the money for those firefighters, their full salary and benefits, and then we receive the award, I think we'd be supplanting. On the other hand, if the only thing we budgeted was the, the match, I don't think that would constitute supplanting.
Cindy's first.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for being here today. So the safer grant that we're considering applying for, how many firefighters are we looking at?
It'd be fifteen firefighters.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Okay. And so we would be, as I understand it, if we, let's say we add no firefighters in the budget season, but we would put away a grant for fifteen, is it cha, is there a chance that the grant would come back for fewer than fifteen or that's the application?
Yeah, typically they give you what you ask for, so it's, it's an all or nothing.
Okay.
And we wouldn't want more or less than fifteen because there's some, there's some problems with the logistics of trying to get that up and running with their, their, their assignments once we got them on and, and balancing shifts, so.
And what, when would the training be? Like, are we running afoul of any training schedules if they don't come out with the grant, for instance, until October or September?
We can, we have an existing list, we can make the, we can make the numbers work. If they were, i- if the grant was awarded, you know, in January, that might be different, but we'll, we'll kind of know what we are going to have before October.
Okay, so it would be twenty-five percent, we'd be looking at the match, right, for the first?
Each of the first two years.
Two years, okay, thank you.
FEMA understands that you have to, uh, uh, once you're alloc, uh, issued an award, that you have to recruit and train those personnel, they provide a hundred-and-eighty-day window for you to accomplish that task as part of the program.
Larian?
And just to put it into dollars perspective, the match for twenty-five percent is four-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-eighty, four-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars in both year one and year two, there's no, the twenty-five percent doesn't increase with a cola or how does that work?
It, it would be whatever the grant, whatever numbers we put in there would be the number that we would be awarded. So it'd be like a raw number at the end, so about five million dollars is what it would work out to for the federal grant and that's what we get. So if there was any colas, that would be on us.
But the match, if we have to budget, would be for, I just want to make sure I know what we have to budget.
It's like a moment in time. It's a moment in time, so we, we've told them that this is what our costs are for the next three years if we were to get it and that's what we get. So if there's a cola, then that would not be calculated in the math.
Yeah, it's the, it's the salary and benefits at the time you apply that, that the, that the federal award is calculated upon and that our match is calculated upon. So anything over and above that would be the city's responsibility as well.
But for the purposes of our biennial budget, if we were to pass this today and then a budget for the match, we'd need to set aside four-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand roughly in each year of the biennial budget to provide the match that would be required.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so let's imagine two different scenarios that we get here. One is we budget the matching funds and then we get the grant, we're all happy, we hire fifteen firefighters. On the other hand, if we budget the money and don't get the grant, just describe for me what happens with that allocated funds.
Well, you've got a, dollars that have been placed in the budget in anticipation of a match that are now uncommitted. So the council would have to go through whatever process that, that they can lawfully to allocate those funds for some other purpose.
Okay. John?
I noticed in the resolution, it says that you're applying for this in order to allow the city to permanently add a, add needed fire and rescue personnel. So you're saying permanently that after three years you would not change? At least that's how it reads to me.
Well, our, our goal is to add those positions to help improve staffing levels, but the, that's our intent when we accept it, but at the end of the day, every budget year creates its own issue, so we, we can't, it's not a guarantee, it's just that's our intent.
So if we authorize you under this resolution to apply for the grant, you're going to come back to us for fifteen new firefighters in this year's budget for this biennium?
Can you, can you repeat that?
If we authorize this and you apply for fifteen positions, you're going to come back in, in the budget we discussed this summer for fifteen more firefighters, is that correct?
If we were authorized the grant, we would make the request.
But aren't you going to bring that in your budget?
I think he explained it, he cannot, otherwise you'd be supplanting. You have, you can budget for the matching funds, but you can't budget for the firefighters.
That's correct.
Because then you'd lose the grant, period.
No, we'd have to budget for the firefighters because we'd have to come up with, as Miss Gator Baird said, I, I don't know where the calculation came to, four-hundred-and-some-thousand, but we'd have to budget for fifteen positions, assuming we get three-quarters of them, the first, three-quarters of the cost, the first two years paid by the safer grant and then sixty-five or thirty-five percent we'd get the last year. So I, I, I don't think we play around with the government on these things.
No, here's, here's the point I'm trying to make, Councilman. If you adopt the budget that adds fifteen firefighters and you've, you've budgeted the money for those fifteen firefighters and then we receive a, a notice of a grant award after the fact, you cannot replace that money that you've already budgeted with the grant funds. If on the other hand, we receive that grant award before the budget is adopted, you can. So it depends on when the award is made. So the safe course of action, if the award has been made by the time you vote on the budget, the safe course of action would be to consider the likelihood of whether it's going to be awarded or not and either add firefighters to the budget, understanding that you're taking the risk that you'll receive a grant you won't be able to use, or don't. And take the risk that you, that you neither receive the grant nor have budgeted money for more firefighters if that's what you wanted to do. And again, if, if we're not for this situation where our fiscal years are, are not in sync, this would be much easier to, for all of us to consider. We simply don't want to be in the position of having a city council or a mayor that decides it would be a good thing to use some of our, our revenue to add some firefighters this year and, and for us to be, not to have applied for a, a grant that might have offset that cost. All, all we're trying to do here is protect the interests of the city council and mayor.
If you didn't have any opportunity for the safer grant, would you still want fifteen firefighters?
Yes, we'd be asking for some firefighters at least in our, in our, the budget that, that we advocate to the mayor, you know, every, every year the department heads present basically an ask to the mayor on what we think we need. And every year that I can recall, we've asked for firefighters and police officers to, you know, serve the growing community. And some years we've, we've received some of those and most years we have not, frankly.
And you mentioned, my last question here, that you mentioned that fifteen is kind of works on the staffing, so what are the units of staffing? Is it five and five and five or you want to hire fifteen at a time?
We would hire fifteen at a time. We'd hire fifteen and one hire.
And I don't recall us doing that many at one time.
Yeah, we have, I'd have to go back and tell you the year, but fifteen is basically a fire company, it means that you've added essentially a fire company to the city's complement.
Okay, other questions? Benny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Cassidy, you said a fire company. I know we're building some new buildings, we have some new fire stations coming online soon. How does a company compare to a, a fully staffing a building? How many people would you take to fully staff three shifts at a fire station?
Well, that's what it takes to fully staff a, a fire station. You know, a basic engine company takes about fifteen employees to handle that. That's, that's four per shift and that's also, you know, the, an additional three that covers all of the other kinds of leave that people receive, their vacation, their holidays, military leave, sick leave, injury leave, parental leave. Basically, if, if you want to staff a, a fire company with twelve people, you need about fifteen people to do that.
And this would be a step in that direction and, and no matter what, you're going to apply for a grant, if we authorized it, you'd apply for a grant and then you'd budget accordingly, either the match or, or not, but you just need a decision from us on whether you should apply for the grant or not.
Basically, we've got to have, we've got to have some kind of evidence from the city council that they're, they're, they're on board with this grant application for it to succeed.
Maybe if I can make an explanation here? If they apply for the grant without telling us, then it's a surprise if we get the grant. We don't want to be surprised.
We don't want to surprise you then.
They're coming at us in a timely fashion and I appreciate it, telling us this is what we'd like to do and I think we should approve it, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, Larian?
Question for law.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney.
Thanks, Jeff. Just to try and get this out there upfront, if we were to budget match funds and then learn that we receive the safer grant after we have adopted a city budget, so we find out in September.
Sure.
What mechanism or process exists for us to then accept the grant and apply a supplemental, for instance, to increase the number of FTEs and receive the grant funding? Can you describe what options we would have available to us or would we be in a position where we'd have to turn it down?
Well, if you've, I'm not quite sure I understand your, your, I mean, one hypothetical would be, as part of the budget process, you put in the twenty-five percent match.
Right.
And then if we receive the grant, the twenty-five percent match is already in the budget and you can proceed to hire those fifteen additional firefighters.
But the FTEs aren't, so I'm just saying, can we amend the budget to include the provision of grant-funded FTEs after September one?
I don't think that would be necessary. I think the fact that the funds are there would allow the, the fire department to proceed.
Is that how you understand it as well, just?
Part of the budget process is not approving an FTE per department. We often, and we give you the FTEs because we're showing you in detail how we expect the money to be spent, but you don't authorize, for example, the law department to have seventeen attorneys. What you approve is a budget and included in that budget is enough, we hope, enough money for my department to employ seventeen attorneys.
So we would just have some sort of resolution later, ordinance later, that would authorize the acceptance of grant funding in a certain amount that we would then be able to utilize?
I'm not sure that we'd have to come back. What you're voting on today is to approve the grant funding, so if we compare this process to the last time we went through this, and you recall, I think we were in, uh, we were in August where we got the notification that the grant had been approved, and then there was a question for the council on whether to accept it or not because it had budget implications. The difference is their procedure has changed and so last time, and Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, last time we didn't have to come to the council for pre-approval. This time, if you vote no, when there's an application out there, they will take that application, I think throw that in the trash because it's not complete without your pre-approval.
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, may I phone a friend? Please do.
Sherri Wolf, Durbal City Budget Officer. I just wanted to point out that there's standard language in the budget resolution that appropriates any grant dollars we receive and that we have in the past when we've received grant funding in the midst of a budget, we will then request those additional FTEs that can be funded by the grant on a fiscal impact statement.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to find out.
Okay.
So if you add a whole nother company, then would you be adding another fire apparatus and all of the attendant devices?
So, you know, part of what we will also ask for every budget cycle since I've been around is more apparatus. And as I said, you know, I think you all realize that the departments make a request to the mayor on the things that we would like to see, what we think our needs are. The mayor decides what goes into the mayor's proposed budget. That's what you receive, and then you modify it if you choose to do so. And yeah, I can tell you that every year, we've asked for fire apparatus, we've asked for police officers, we've asked for firefighters.
Those haven't always come out of what the mayor recommends, though.
No, they do not.
It used to be, when I first came on council, that there was a fire apparatus on every budget. That was just uniform, and then it was dropped.
I'm sure my fellow directors can all tell you that what we ask the mayor for and what ultimately ends up in the mayor's proposed budget are not the same.
I'm just kind of concerned. We had the discussion on the Public Safety Committee about the sales tax that was increased at the quarter cent for three years, and then how we publicize that to the public, that for those fire, those new stations, those four stations, we have no new personnel and no new fire apparatus. And now, we're talking about a whole new company.
Time marches on, Councilman, and the city continues to grow. You know, we're basically adding O'Neill to Lincoln every year, about 30, somewhere in the range of 3,500 people or so.
I don't disagree with that. I just don't like to misinform the public and then come back later once you get the tax, and then...
I know when I spoke about it, I was very careful to say that these stations could be staffed with existing personnel, but that can't happen forever. The city's continuing to grow. And we're trying to provide you with an option here, that if you decide that it's in the city's best interest to have firefighters, that we've at least got the possibility of getting some federal assistance with that. And we'll be back with, I'm reasonably certain, with police officers as well. The Office of Community Oriented Services hasn't issued a COPS hiring program announcement yet, but I expect that they're on the verge of doing that, and we'll be in exactly the same situation with that.
Where would you station this company?
I don't know.
Well, it depends on when they come on, because when they first come on, there's about a year's worth of training. So, after they're out, then either A, they would go onto a new company if it was necessary at that time, or they would help with some coverage in existing areas with, right now, there's some overtime that we have to pay. This would offset some overtime until new stations were opened up, and then they would fill those gaps.
I can tell you that Lincoln Fire and Rescue, in the time that I've been public safety director, has made immense strides in being able to make staffing decisions based on the analysis of data. It's been a huge change in the way Lincoln Fire and Rescue does business. They do lots and lots of work with GIS technology and with database. If you walked into the fire conference room today, you'd see an incredible chart on the wall of every 15-minute time segment throughout the work week, color-coded by the workload that occurs during that. And that's Chief De Spain's visualization of where the greatest need is, you know, across the calendar and the clock. We do the same thing across the geography of the city, and just a lot of analysis that goes into the decision on where we position our resources.
Would you consider applying these 15 to developing an emergency response vehicle, an ERV program, so we can save the wear and tear on our fire engines? I'm dead serious. I have been for 10 years.
And John, I'd like to just state that we are talking about authorizing a grant application, not all of this other stuff at this time.
Well, but...
It's outside the scope of the resolution. It's outside the scope of the resolution.
Okay. Other questions?
Just real quickly. Mike, you, I mean, this, we aren't assuming that every firefighter you currently have is going to be there in three years. So, you're losing people every year, right? So, this is replacing some of those?
Yeah. We, well, this won't replace anybody. We would have to hire, on top of 15, we'd have to keep up with attrition. So, there's two different formulas here, but not to confuse you. But let's say, at the end of the third year, you say, we don't want to fund this anymore. There's a different model.
Okay.
Whatever model comes forward, and we need to downstaff some of these. We lose about eight people per year due to attrition. So, within probably 24 months or less, we would be, we would lose all 15. So, we have to hire fairly rapidly just to keep up with attrition.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Leary?
Question for David Carey.
David Carey with the planning department.
Apologize, David. I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit, but we did a number of annexations last year, both voluntary and involuntary. And I want to say we brought over 1,000 acres into this city. But can you recall sort of what the growth has been just in the last year alone in terms of acreage, square miles?
Yeah. I mean, in general, what we're seeing is about a square mile per year on average, and this past year has not been any different. I know that Director Cassidy mentioned about 3,500 people per year, which is about the average of what we're experiencing. So, that is effectively a square mile to a mile and a half of land area, and that's the growth in the community. That's not necessarily what was actually annexed in that annexation package. That would be in addition to the annexation package.
Can you recall through annexations how much we grew last year?
The annexation package itself or the growth?
All of the annexations we've done the last year.
Oh, I think the, it would be because of the annexation package, that would be larger than obviously the normal growth. So, I think we were probably more at about two and a half square miles as part of the total. Not a large amount of population with those annexations because it was a little bit lower density areas. But I know it was a few hundred more individuals coming into the city on top of that 3,500 or so with natural growth.
But one of the major concerns with the number of those annexations was making sure that we had adequate emergency response despite the low density, as I recall.
Sure. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you. Next item, please. Oh, excuse me. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item.
All right. Next is item 5C, accepting a report of new impending claims against the city for April 1st through the 15th.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak to a pending claim? Okay. Go ahead. You're up next.
All right. Next is item 5D, accepting the air quality program grant work plan for the 18, 19 federal fiscal years.
Scott Holmes, Major of the Environmental Health Division with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. Members of the council, this is a grant which we have had for over two decades that comes before you because it's more than a single-year grant. We match this money so that we can do our air quality program. The matching funds are from fees that are paid for by the businesses and industries that are regulated through the program. We ask you to approve this, and would I answer any questions that you may have?
Questions? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 5E, authorizing acceptance of the low bid by MTZ Construction for repaving District 159 in Saunders Avenue from 12th to 14th Streets.
Okay. The applicant first, please.
Some people very excited to get up here, so I'll make this short. We came to you earlier this year and asked for a paving, repaving district of Saunders in there, that resolution. As you recall, property owners were concerned about the cost. There's a provision in there that if the bids came in at over 25 percent of that preliminary estimate, we would be back in front of you, asking for your approval to move forward with that. This is the case, that this project has come in at over 25 percent higher than what we expected. That's due to a couple of main things, in my opinion. In trying to keep the access, as you recall, that was also very important to the businesses there. In fact, I shook hands with the gentleman and said, we will make sure we keep you in business. We found that that to be a little more costly than we expected. We're going to have to do some temporary roadways. We're going to have to do some improvements in some back alleys. And we're going to have to build this in about three different phases. And that's not typical for two blocks to do it in three different chunks. And so, the market has bared out that that's going to be more expensive than we expected. The good news, I think, I have here for you is, we have analyzed it. We've looked at it. The cost, there was a split between the city and the property owners. We have looked at the increase to the property owners, which is about $43,000, and determined that the savings that we will see in our operations and maintenance budget from having to go out and maintain that road as its condition, along with the traffic handling, they'll have to come with another project coming up in the 14th and Cornhusker on-ramp area. It's in the city's best interest to move ahead with this paving district now at this time and assume those $43,000 in costs, which will ultimately result in savings for the city, both in operations and maintenance and in a future construction project. With that, I'd happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions? Cindy?
Thank you. Thanks for being here. So, are you saying that the savings is going to be 43,000 in those projects? Or that was, I kind of lost track of where the number was. I'm sorry.
We think that the $43,000 that the city's taking will be made up in savings from maintenance and from what I don't have to expend on the next project.
Okay. So, that's what, that's what it came in over, and you think, well, that will pay for itself.
In terms of the property owner's piece of it, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, sir. Next testifier. Please come forward. And don't forget to sign in on the sheet after you've testified.
I'll sign in. My name is Amy Herr, and this is my husband, Ben. We own 1231 Saunders and 1303 Saunders.
Could you move the mic a little bit closer? We can't quite hear you.
Sorry. That's better. My name is Amy Herr. This is my husband, Ben Herr. We own 1231 Saunders and 1303 Saunders, and we're just here today to ask you to approve the low bid so we can finally get this project wrapped up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier.
Hi, council. I'm Ed Grubbs, and I own property on Saunders Street. And the same thing, we're just trying to get this street finished up. I agree with his assessment that the savings on this street will easily, the benefit will be a benefit to the city. When they start doing the roundabout and all that traffic starts coming down that street, it will be a nightmare. We had a really bad asphalt street, and now we have a real bad gravel street. And so, I think that I would ask you to approve this, and let's get the, this thing has a longer runtime than Star Wars, start to finish, you know? I'd just like to put it to bed, you know, and get the thing done. So, that's what I have.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 5F, miscellaneous 18002, approving the amendment to protective covenants by eliminating the prohibition relating to restaurants providing fast food services on property generally located at 6145 O Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Kristy Schroff, 300 North 44th, Lincoln. I'm here representing Jay and Joni Peters. They own property at 6145 O, which is right across O Street from Gateway Mall. Until May 1, that had been the site of the old country buffet that has since closed. It is now vacant. Joni would love to see that property cleaned up. It's getting dilapidated. Panera Bread approached Jay about several months ago and proposed a bill to suit. They said, Jay, if you build a building for us, a new building, we will enter into a 15-year lease. And Jay viewed this as an opportunity to revitalize O Street, to be a benefit to the neighborhood, and also to clean up the property. So, why are we here? A restaurant on O Street seems like a no-brainer. This is B1 zoning. And it would allow many other things, including banks with drive-throughs, other restaurants. But we're dealing with covenants that exist on the property that are 43 years old. Those covenants, you've all read your reports, so I'll just hit the highlights, but those covenants prohibit restaurants providing fast food carryout services, which planning has interpreted to mean drive-throughs. Our application simply requests that you amend the existing covenants by deleting that provision. We're asking for no other amendments. And the covenants do give you, the city council, the authority to do that. As you all know, we're a mobile society, and eating habits have changed considerably in the last 43 years. And although Panera is primarily a destination restaurant, the drive-through component is important to satisfy its customer demands going forward. So, the question is neighbors. What do the neighbors think about this? Before we even filed this application, we had a meeting with neighbors. We invited commercial neighbors. We invited residential neighbors. In fact, Jay went up and down the streets, knocked on doors, talked with neighbors. And to our knowledge, there is no residential opposition to this. One of the major concerns of the planning report was, how will this impact the residential area to the south? Well, as a matter of fact, one of the people that showed up at the neighborhood meeting was the president of East Ridge Neighborhood Association, Jenny Watson. And she went back and talked to her board. East Ridge, by the way, is the neighborhood association that envelops this particular property. And they have come out in support, and she wrote you a letter, but that predated this appearance on the first reading. So, I'd like to share that and make that letter from East Ridge Neighborhood Association, could I submit that? As a part of the record, in favor of this, she states they see no problems. That was in your April 23rd packet. Some of the feedback that we've gotten from neighbors are that this definitely benefits their community. They see this as a neighborhood gathering place, and they also like what Panera does for the community, that it gives back to the community, and they're well aware of that. Operationally, Panera is neighborhood-friendly. It closes, it closes generally at 9:00 PM. And physically, this particular restaurant that we're proposing is smaller than the existing restaurant. It's 4,800 square feet. The current building is 6,044 square feet, so we would tear that down. Physically, it's located closer to O Street, so any concerns with buffering the neighborhood would be met by just proximity to O Street, keeping two drives open on O Street. And we would really expect most of the traffic to be in and out of O Street. So, to summarize, this is really not very complicated. We're just asking you to simply delete the drive-through restriction. My client would not be investing over a million dollars for something that is not going to be there. He's a former banker. He has that in his mind when he evaluates. And we'd simply ask that you approve this application. Also here today to answer any questions you might have are representatives from Panera. But because of respect for your time, we're not doing a formal presentation, but we've got Cassie Raber, who's the area operating partner with Panera, and she's in charge of five restaurants operationally in this area. Brian Barnard, who is the senior development project manager with Panera from St. Louis, is here and can answer any Panera questions you may have. Also here is Brad Marshall, a member of our team. He's the land development team leader with Olson Associates, and he drew the site plan.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I just, could we circulate the letter? I don't see it in our online materials, and I would just like to see the neighborhood letter.
Here's another one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else like to speak on this item? Please come forward.
Hi there. My name is Monica Manning, and I'm here today because I live in the neighborhood, and I did go to the neighborhood meeting that they hosted. And my driveway actually sits right outside of, right onto East Ridge Drive. So, I'm on the corner lot with Bruce Drive at 121 Bruce Drive and East Ridge. And I would be happy to have Panera in the neighborhood. The Chinese restaurant has been there for a long time. And if it were any other restaurant, maybe like a McDonald's kind of type drive-through, then I would be here with a big no, because that would be so much extra. then I would be here with a big no, because that would be so much extra traffic. But with Panera, I do admire the fact that they do close at nine P M. I think the hours would be nice. The update of the property would be an asset for our neighborhood and, because it is very tired looking over there. And they, I think they would just be clean neighborhood neighbors for us. So I think it would be nice. I do, I do really hope that all the traffic, and they did show it in their diagrams and everything, that it would come primarily off of O Street, circle around the building, have that drive-through window, keep circling, do the pickup window, and then it would spit people, all the traffic back out onto O Street. I just wouldn't want it coming, you know, back through the cutout into the neighborhood. And it's drawn up that way. And so I think that that would be beneficial. Sure would be better than any others, you know, like a sports bar or anything like that that would have, be serving alcohol and be open till two A M. for right up in our neighborhood. I think that's it.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can use this microphone over here if you like, either one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Michael Reardon, attorney, appearing on behalf of the Women's Clinic of Lincoln. I'd like to put the staff photo.
It'll come up in just a moment.
Okay, the clinic, the women's clinic is located in three buildings, right here, here, and here, off of Lincrest. And the doctors have purchased these lots through the years with the idea of developing a, a residentially type of campus for the operations of their clinic. And they built three, single family, or actually, single-family, built three single-story, one-story buildings on there intentionally, and they've landscaped it considerably. And the area that is in dark here, and I'm sure you have it in your report, is the area concerning the protective covenants that were enacted and recorded back in nineteen seventy-five. The covenants, as I understand it, and I do recall this, and I'm showing my age, were part of what we call contract zoning. And it's kind of alluded to in the staff reports. And basically what that is, is when the developer came forward in nineteen seventy-five, they wanted to change the residential zoning to commercial zoning. And the city apparently thought that that was a good idea then, but they didn't want to have all of, all of the uses available to the developer that were in the commercial zoning. So they basically entered into a contract with the developer saying, here's what we want to eliminate as far as the uses that you can have when you develop your property. And that document is represented by the protective covenants that are filed of record with the registered deeds office and are still in full force and effect. The problem here is, is if you would decide to approve this particular proposal, it would not only allow Panera's drive-through on this particular property, but it would allow a McDonald's, a Wendy's, any type of drive-through restaurant. So we're very concerned about the impact that it has on, on our property. As you can see from the drawing on the property furthest to the east, that would probably be impacted the most by this particular proposal. Why is, why are we objecting to this, other than the legalities of it? The staff has correctly pointed out in their recommendation of a denial of this application would have a negative impact, we believe, on the properties to the south, residential properties. As the lady stated before me, she loves Panera's but wouldn't want to see any other type of drive-through. That's a possibility under the way this would be structured. They eliminate altogether the prohibition against the drive-through. So it could be anybody. If the Panera deal falls through, it could be a McDonald's, it could be a Wendy's, any of those types of uses. The second reason we object to this is, as I indicated to you, the doctors have spent a lot of time and money developing their, their property into what I think is a complementary development to the residential to the south. And they feel that the, the drive-through would be an adverse impact upon their property. Third, as I mentioned to you, a contract was entered into back in nineteen seventy-five. The covenants are still in full force and effect. And I've not heard any legitimate reason for eliminating the, the covenant prohibiting this type of use, other than we want to have a Panera's here. Fourth, I think that granting this particular application would be setting a precedent of some sort. When the next person comes forward and wants to put another one of those prohibited uses, let's say a car dealership, you're going to be hard-pressed to deny that particular request. So I would urge you to follow the standing, planning staff reports and their recommendation of denial of this particular application. With that, I'd attempt to answer any questions you might have of me.
Questions? John?
Thank you, Mr. Reardon, for outlining your concerns. Would there be any, you know, where the applicant here has talked about the nature of Panera's business and that there'll still be a lot of sit-down and the difference of that versus, I mean, pure fast food? And in your many endeavors, is there some type of a restriction on volume or that would be administratively feasible so that the real concerned uses would not be permitted?
I'm not aware of any, John. I, you know, I think just the fact that you're being asked to eliminate this particular prohibition opens the door to just about anything, any type of drive-through restaurant. As far as basing it on volume and that type of thing, there's perhaps a, a way to do that, but I'm not aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Larian?
Thank you for offering your testimony. Could you help us understand the rationale for seeing, aside from the slippery slope argument of eliminating prohibitions, the clinic is arguing adverse impact on its property as well? Is that because of the hours of operation or traffic? Or can you help us understand?
Mainly because, excuse me for interrupting. Mainly because of the, the drive-through itself, the, the traffic, the, the lights. The clinic operates according to the doctors, when I talked to them last, and it varies, but the hours of operation are generally from about six to six. So they, they would be impacted, especially the furthest east building. And we feel that the, the impact would be enough where, that's why I'm here today.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Okay, a brief rebuttal then?
Briefly?
Brief. Yep.
I will say that when we sent out our letters to the neighbors, we included commercial neighbors and the women's clinic showed up at our meeting. Women's clinic administrator left a voicemail for me. I was, I happened to be out of town at the time and she said, the doctors are very excited about Panera. And thank you for the letter. Our only concern is the access to East Ridge Drive. No mention was made about anything else. A lot of time passed. That was early March. A lot of time passed and on April twenty-seventh, Mr. Reardon called me and said, could we meet? We'd like to meet with you. This was just a week ago Friday. So we, Jay Peters and I met with, over at the doctor's office at their convenience on May second. And we asked, what are the issues? And the issues had become the drive-through and parking, the twenty-two stalls. The doctors have a parking problem. And we talked about it and how we solve the problem. We offered several solutions at that meeting. We followed up with a written proposal the following day to solve their parking problem. And instead of any kind of dialogue or response, we got silence. I tried to call Mr. Reardon on Friday, just this last Friday, and was unable to reach him and then received this email on Saturday saying that they would continue to oppose our application. So we suspect this is to buy leverage to solve their parking problem.
Thank you. John?
Ms. Schroff, Ms. Schroff, Kristi? Would you please review the, you mentioned the two accesses on O Street and so forth, and kind of review that and what is being designed or will be designed to minimize that traffic that would go onto East Ridge?
I'd love to call on Brad Marshall, who drew the design with Olson Associates. Brad, can you come up?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Brad Marshall with Olson Associates at six hundred one P Street, Suite two hundred. So we have been working with Panera on site plan development for this particular lot for a couple of months now. And one of the, one of the things that we have been working with engineering services is about the access to the site. Access management policy actually states that if trips are generated or increased more than fifty percent to the site, that access to the site is looked at very carefully and could qualify that property to limit access. O Street, as you can imagine, is very high, highly, property that has access to that you want to try to limit it, accesses along the corridor. And we've been having some open dialogue as to what the possibilities have been. The site plan that is also in the packet I'll include here has basically been developed such that access could enter either the western access or the eastern access, here or here. There is actually a shared access, which is to the property to the east with the eastern. And then there is the southern one, which is actually shared with the women's clinic property. And they utilize that as an exit from one of their parking lots. So as we considered the three accesses, two of them are basically shared. And so that looks, that leaves the western access as a possibility to make some changes. Restaurant development has changed in the last ten years or so with accessibility and making sure that the flow for customers is easy. And one of the design elements has kind of been this counterclockwise development. You've been down to like raising canes on Highway Two. They filter you in one direction, one direction of flow of traffic as they proceed through the, through the property. That's kind of the concept here. It is a counterclockwise entrance, depending on whichever entrance you come in and get filtered into the drive-through lane if that is where you're going. Otherwise, plenty of parking around the site. So the site has plenty of, of parking as opposed to what is required for a restaurant. And plenty of other attributes, such as stacking and so forth, for the property as well. So we have discussed as, as the question really was, what has been looked at here as a right-in-only access for the left, the western access here. I believe that Panera would be willing to consider that as, as that being a contingency to leave that one open if we get there. First step in the process is really to be, before you here, to see if we can be on a drive-through covenant issue and then we will proceed on with engineering services to discuss the access.
Okay, other questions, John?
If we waive the covenants here, what assurances would we have under the access management and so forth that you would follow through with this? Just trying to think out loud here for the women's clinic's concerns. And I can see what you're saying on that, counterclockwise, where you'd go through the pass-through window and then your focus of your aim toward O Street.
Absolutely. By definition, I believe that this would actually, if, if they were proceed, they got the covenant and they move forward and they submitted a building permit tomorrow, I believe this would get kicked off into review to engineering services to find out, a plan review, and they may question that at that time if it meets access management It is a fast food restaurant. If you do the straight calculation of the increased trips for this property, they would qualify to be under that review and to take on comments the engineering services would provide at that time. There is the alternate to provide or for the applicant to submit a deviation to this, to this property to allow that access to stay wide open. But that would be at the, at the consideration of the director. And she could make comments to approve or deny that application at that time. We've had open conversation, like I said, about that driveway into the site. And I believe that the right-in on that access is what we have tentatively come to a conclusion on.
Okay. Larian?
Staff questions, actually, for?
Okay, thank you, sir.
David Carey, N Law.
David Carey with the planning department?
Tim C, law department.
My questions are, for you are related. We heard testimony from a neighbor that in support of Panera, but not necessarily in support of other types of fast food restaurants. And the decision before us is a broad one that would allow all fast food restaurants at the site, and we've heard that. One of the concerns raised with non-Panera fast food restaurants has to do with hours of operation. Is there an ability that we have to restrict, if we were to approve the elimination of the fast food prohibition, could we restrict the hours of operation such that it closed and it only would allow fast food restaurants that closed by nine P M. to help address the neighborhood concerns related to lights in the buildings and traffic after hours? Is that even possible?
I think, Tim, we'll probably have some legal positioning on that in a particular sense. I, I would suggest that we not go in that direction mainly because it becomes an enforcement issue. And as we've talked often about different things like this, that enforcement should be part of the consideration of when we're making these decisions. Because as we know, any of these properties can turn over in ownership or types of, of restaurants that come in. And that is exactly what one of the major considerations of the best staff position on this was, we don't normally control the type of restaurant that comes in and gets approval here. Once that drive-through restaurant prohibition is removed, it could be any type of drive-through restaurant. And there's nothing against drive-through restaurants in general, but what we did, we started with the assumption that this prohibition was in place for a reason in nineteen seventy-five. We didn't see an overarching reason to remove it, simply because it is a Panera. While Panera's, clearly they have less drive-through activity than other drive-through restaurants. Clearly, they would be closing earlier than other drive-through restaurants. The problem is, is that in the future, it could be those other drive-through restaurants. And that is the main reason why we took our position. And maybe the law department has a position on the particulars of being able to enforce a particular restriction.
And certainly enforcement's always has its own challenge, but, but I suppose if I had to just answer this from a purely candid be done, I think the answer is probably yes because you would be lift, I mean, the council is allowed to amend these covenants so long as they don't create greater restrictions. Here you would be opening up some of those restrictions, subject to some additional conditions. So technically, it would be, I think, less restrictive than what you have now in the covenants, I think. But, but again, the enforcement efforts are an ongoing issue with something like that.
So would there be any moment in? So would there be any moment in time in the future where it to change ownership when there would be communication between the city and the property owner about the covenants? Or would that only come back forward if they were to change their site plan or do something different? And therefore, you lose the enforcement opportunity?
Well, the, the covenants would remain in place and-
Right, but-
And run with the land. So any, any subsequent property owner would be subject to the same set of covenants.
If you were to place a new, a new restriction on it, a different restriction on it within those covenants, that mechanism would still be in place.
When would a new property owner then become aware of the covenant? I mean, I'm just trying to, you're saying enforcement's an issue, but if, if a property owner is aware of the, the rules and plays, I mean-
Yeah, s-
I want to assume people are going to play by them. Are you, are you trying to hedge against worst-case scenario, people don't play by the rules and therefore what happens?
I think I'm, I think, not really hedging against worst-case scenario, more saying that if we, if we didn't put an additional restriction on it, it would be open to any type of drive-through restaurant. I would agree with, with Tim in saying that you have the legal authority to put a different type of restriction on it, and that would go with the land. So that would be understood when, when and if another business came through or property ownership changed. So that would go with the land. I mean, it would be understood and it would be there. It's, it's just not our normal way of doing this. And these covenants are also a little bit different. We also, in today's nomenclature, we'd call it a zoning agreement. It'd be a little bit more straightforward in that sense. So it's a little bit different in that sense as well.
Okay, John?
Mr. C, from a legal standpoint and listening to the testimony here today and the concerns of the women's clinic versus the property owner here and moving ahead with a good establishment, a 15-year lease and so forth, in your mind and experience, can you think of maybe some fine tuning that could be put in the waiver of the covenant that's easily administratable but administered, but respects the rights of a property owner, respects the rights of the adjacent people, the neighborhood?
Always the fun of drafting from the dice, which is dangerous. But I, but I do actually have an idea there. So I'm, the, the one idea would be to, more specifically, I suppose, adopt the, the site plan that was, so that the covenant was lifted for this particular piece of property, subject to and conditioned upon constructing according to the site plan that you'll see attached as Appendix C. That's an idea. That's not, I wouldn't, wouldn't suggest that, that the property owner has agreed to that condition by any means. I wouldn't suggest that the clinic has, would be okay with that. But if I had to throw out an idea, that would be, one idea that would at least potentially limit the, the scope of what we're talking about here so that you didn't have a different restaurant coming in with a different site plan and creating different issues that go along with a different, different idea.
I hate to suggest a delay of, say, a week, but would that enable you to visit with the parties and then come up with some ideas that still allows this development to go forward and, that we, on an equitable basis?
At your direction, I'd be happy to talk to the, to the parties and, and try to see if that would resolve something.
Okay, Jane?
I have a question. The existing access points on O Street, are there already two drives in existence on O Street?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any more staff questions? Thank you very much. We'll go on to the next item.
All right. Next then is Item 5G, approving a memorandum of understanding between the city and LPS, establishing how school resource officers and LPS staff should interact with LPS students in certain situations.
Okay. We will take testimony on this, but people should remember that, or be aware that we are, we've received a request to delay this action until next week. So is there anyone who would like to testify on this?
Jocelyn Golden from City Law. I think I've talked to you about this MOU. If there's any questions for me, I'm here to answer, and so is Chief Blimeister.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Cory?
I'm here to speak in favor of the memorandum of understanding that I looked through today. Sort of in a related, well, this is related. Ben Goble stopped by my office on Friday. And Ben Goble, I didn't know this, but I got a, a great history lesson on Friday, set up the School Resource Officer Program in Lincoln back in 1971. I asked him to come speak. He was reluctant to do that. He's spoken across the world and the United States about Lincoln's School Resource Program because so many cities emulated that program. And what was interesting to me was this MOU was essentially what Ben Goble had in mind way back in 1971. And he told me all these great stories about it. In 1967, Joe Carroll was the chief of police. And because of the 60s, that was before my time, but I've seen shows about it, the crime wave, crime wave was increasing, statistics were going up, money was starting to pour in. And, and Chief Carroll, instead of just hiring more police officers to throw people in prison, came up with this idea of, I want to put police officers into the schools. And so he hired Ben Goble to do this. Mr. Goble set up this program, and he got a hold of the schools. He flew around the country to see what other cities were doing, but there wasn't a whole lot of other cities that had this idea. And when Mr. Goble explained this to me, it really was community policing at its finest, and it was one of the role models. He ended up traveling to Chicago, DC, Detroit, Tucson, Honolulu, London, Paris, Vienna, and Zurich to show this is what Lincoln's doing. And again, it wasn't, it wasn't, we're throwing all these kids in prison. It's, here's how we're building community relations with, with our community. He sat on, he sat on various crime commissions, and I wanted to talk about this real quick. And this is from the Nebraska Crime Commission. They repeatedly recommend for consideration by those officials concerned about making improvements in the attitude of the youth toward the law enforcement. Again, building those community relations at, at a young age. And that's from the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice. He gave me all these pamphlets, and they don't have a date, but this was early on. And what I highlighted there, this is way back in the early 70s. Society has become more and more urban and more and more mobile. This, this transition has brought about a loss in personal identity between officer and youngster. The kid on the corner and the cop on the beat have drifted apart and no longer know each other as they once did. This project will restore some of that loss with an ultimate advantage of being, of being a better understanding. The students will see the law enforcement officer as a community servant who has feelings, concerns, frustrations, and limitations much the same as any individual. These relationships can do much to establish mutual respect and at the same time destroy some of the false stereotypes that plague today's society. And it, it's interesting, you know, this is early 1970s, and I don't know, like I said, I don't know the exact date of this pamphlet, but I did note, apparently, over here, when it has some of the duties for the police officer, one was finding abandoned refrigerators and making sure that kids weren't crawling in, in them. So it's, it's a bit dated.
For those who don't remember, that was important because kids getting played in refrigerators and get, got killed back in the day.
I do remember having to help tear off the door of one of our old ones, so that didn't happen.
Yep.
Do I have one minute left? Or am I up?
Please, you got another minute.
Okay. Mr. Goble also had collected quotes from things that some of the best and brightest of Lincoln over the past 40 years had said about this program in the 70s and the 80s. Tom Panzine, Chair of the Lancaster County Crime Commission, said, "This is, this is a program that we're most proud of. This is our showpiece." Joe Carroll, who's in 1989, after serving for 45 years, said, "I feel during my 45-year tenure with the Lincoln Police Department, no assignment, the assignment of officers, no assignment of officers accomplished more in helping children and future citizens in the school resource project." And it all started in middle schools. The first resource officers were in middle schools, and then it started to graduate up. And people enjoyed it so much, it was popular with the schools, the teachers, and the parents, that they wanted more. Every school that was asked about it said, "Heck, yes, come on in, come help teach our children and, and create that bond." So I ask the city to approve of this memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Cory? Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to testify on this item? Very good. We can now vote on these resolutions.
All right. Item 5A was the approving Nowhere Bar as Kino Satellite, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 5B is the Safer Grant, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Before I let everybody else discuss, I'm just going to point out, this, let's just keep our discussion about what this is. This is a approval for the city to make an application for a grant. If the grant is awarded, or in any case, we will see this again in the budget season, in any case. So this is only about authorizing a grant application. Cindy?
Thank you. So I appreciate that we're seeing this now because I know that it caused some confusion back in the 1618 budget. And so I do appreciate them coming forward to see our, our feelings of this and for clarifying the difference between if we budget for officers and if we just budget to, to put the match. So I, very supportive of this. I appreciate them coming forward and everything is upfront, and I like that.
Other comments? Learyn?
Public safety's our number one priority. And as a part of a growing city, supporting the growth includes supporting expanded emergency services, like our emergency fire and rescue response. And in previous public discussions around things like annexation, we've, we've seen just how vital and important it is to the public to ensure that we provide these services. And I will support this resolution.
Carl?
Thank you. As was explained to us, this, this is a commitment that we make. However, it's a three-year commitment. And at the end of that time, if our financial conditions worsen and we're not able to, to continue on, then we can make adjustments appropriate at that time.
Okay. John?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, and I felt more firmly, but when Mr. Eskridge talks about this is a commitment we're making, it, it kind of contradicts what Mr. Christensen was saying, that we're just saying you can go ahead and apply for the grant, but we're not committing 15 officers for three years. And that's my concern, is that this type of legislation starts the ball rolling, and my old snowball on the matter horn, and it just becomes an avalanche. And that just concerns me. And so I guess if that's how you feel, Mr. Eskridge, this is a commitment, then that flies, that's different than what Mr. Christensen is.
No, we approach it from different viewpoints, perhaps.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I think this is a good thing. Please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Item 5C is the Report of New Impending Claims for April 1st through the 15th, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 5D is Accepting the Air Quality Program Grant Work Plan, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 5E, authorizing acceptance of the low bid by MTZ Construction for repaving District 159, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion?
Yes. Carl? Again, this is the worst road in Lincoln, and-
I don't think so.
It needs help. And I'll put it up there with any of them. And it's, it, I, it's a good thing. I appreciate the city working with, with the businesses in the area. And again, there will be a, a construction project on North 14th Street, and this is a necessary connection to 10th Street once that bridge opens up. So, yes.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 5S, F as Miscellaneous 18002, amending the, approving the amendment to protective covenants at 6145 O Street, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Is there a motion to delay?
I would move to delay. I think that the Law Department was going to be talking to the, the parties about the possibility of restriction.
Need a second.
Second.
Moved by Cindy, seconded by Learyn?
Thank you.
Is this for action only?
Well, yeah, because I think we could probably just talk to staff.
Okay, very good.
Okay. Please call the roll. On the delay.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then Item 5G is the MOU between the city and LPS. Someone wish to move to delay action for one week?
I move we delay action on this item until next week.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. All right. Public hearing ordinances, second reading. Item 6A, creating alley repaving District Number 52 from 16th to 17th Street between E and F Streets.
Susie Philippi, Public Works. This alley is just two blocks south of the one from Ferguson that we did last week. I'm not going to give you all the details. You have it all in front of you. This involves nine parcels, nine owners. We've had several meetings. This group thinks that they can get their 51% that we need in order to go forward with paving. Again, they have to have signed formal petitions from 51% of the owners before we can go forwards. Any questions that I might answer for you?
Questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Okay, next item, please.
All right.
Someone's coming for, gotta jump up quick because I moved along smartly.
Ryan West, 927 South 17th Street. Homeowner and resident with family, three kids and a wife, two dogs. We, they say percentages that don't make sense to me because if I'm not mistaken, I'm in like 2% of the people that own and live in the home in our immediate area, which I consider a very proud statistic for that area. And I'm going to keep it that way. It's not going anywhere. I'm not selling the house. It's going to stay in the family. Not concerned about the benefits that the residents in the alley are going to be getting from this, but the disadvantages that they may be getting. The amount of traffic that the alley has is well beyond any Panera bread in town, I promise. It's astronomical, given, I mean, it could be a Husker game day, wrong turn, the scrappers coming through the alley all the way like it's a through street, the soup kitchens just a couple blocks away, and you've got the conjoining neighborhoods right there. It's kind of like a funnel area for traffic because nobody wants to drive by the Capitol and the governor's mansion and everything's right there. And along with that, 17th Street is a one-way street. So anybody wanting to go down 16th Street from the neighborhood across from my house comes down the alley quite fast. If, I mean, you can imagine as fast as you can get through an alley without radar and no stop signs. And, I mean, the potholes are bigger than I could hold my arms out, but I understand it's going to be nice to not hit your head on the ceiling going to your driveway, but I'm the only driveway. And I know there's a bunch of apartment people that are there that are going to be benefiting from this too. And there's a lot of residents that are going to be happy to see the improvements with the alley, just like the Ferguson alley two blocks up. And we're happy to see the improvements, but they just bulldoze two houses next door. It's a totally different appearance now, and it's right on the way to downtown from Sheridan, Van Dorn. I mean, it's a pretty high-traffic area, and I just want to make sure that it's- I mean, it's a pretty high-traffic area, and I just want to make sure that it's done right. And at the very least, possibly get some speed bumps put in. But if it's not too much to ask, I'd like to see it closed off, and I'll donate my part of the alley to whoever. But it would be, I'm, I'm not joking. It would be really neat to see it closed off as a one-way in only for the apartment people there. And I know it's out there, but they did it with P Street way back when, at Twenty-seventh and P, when it turned into a one-way street. And it's an alley. There's no stop signs. There's a school a block away. Um, the, it's, the alley's actually half a block away. It's catty corner, and the school zone doesn't even go past the alley. Doesn't make any sense. I mean, it's, for the amount of traffic, I know it's not traffic that any of us prefer, but, um, it, it's very underappreciated and not noticed.
Okay, questions? Just to be, go, go ahead, Jane.
Have they put, you know, kids at play signs up to slow traffic or deter traffic, or why would any traffic go down there with all the potholes? After you go through one-
Because they have to turn right to go a block over and then go back up to the stop sign and then make a left turn down Sixteenth. It's just easy to make a straight shot down the alley and then turn left down Sixteenth. Lot of people use it as a through street. People that have suspended licenses and whatnot that are trying to avoid being caught by the police. A very high-traffic area. It needs to be more lit up. I mean, not asking to do any sort of artistic beautification like the Hay Market, but, uh, um, not a rich person, but I'd like to see it done right. And I got three kids and just want to see the speed limit just appropriately.
Just to clarify for you, you said something about two percent?
I heard at one point in time, uh, the people that live in the immediate area, three, three, two to three percent own and live in the home.
Okay, so, uh, this, this, uh, petition, to show you clear-
I'm the only one on the block-
It's, it's by property owner, not by residence.
Right, I understand.
So you represent eleven percent, being one of nine property owners.
It's dependent on square foot. I am the only driveway-
What's that? By frontage foot, okay.
I'm the only driveway as a property owner. Everything else is a parking lot or through street. I mean, not to sound like I'm the only one that we're making these decisions for, but, I mean, it's affecting the entire family and the, the alley in general. It's, it's fast. I mean, you'd be amazed to see how fast people can go down that alley with the size of the potholes that are in there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify? Okay.
Quick staff, staff question?
Staff question?
Susie?
Okay.
Thank you. I was just curious if you've done, um, traffic calming measures in the past in different paving districts? If you have any examples of that or thoughts and reaction to what's been raised?
This is a repaving alley, so the alleys, we really haven't got into too much yet, so I'm going to say, no, I'm not going to say it's not possible, but this, again, we're just at the very beginning of this project. We haven't done any design work or anything. It's just whether we should actually create it and go forwards.
Okay.
If I may, we had the Casey Store on South Forty-Eighth in College View, and that wasn't an alley repaving per se, but there were some speed bumps put in that, so it's, there is an example of that in the city.
Again, I'm, I'm not going to say it's not possible. We just haven't got to that point yet.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Next item, please.
All right, that concludes our public hearing. We can move on to our ordinance's third reading. Item seven A, Amending the Pay Schedule for the Employee Group Whose Classifications Are Assigned to the Pay Range, Which Is Prefix by the Letter E by Creating the Classification of City Council Secretary, Introduced by Gayler Baird.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Leary and seconded by Cindy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move to delay this action until July fourth, uh, two thousand eighteen. June fourth.
June fourth, okay.
Thank you. The summer's already over, as far as I'm concerned.
Sometimes we wish it were, but-
Second.
Moved by Cindy, seconded by Carl. Discussion on the delay? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item seven B is Text Amendment One Eight Zero Zero Four, Amending Sections Twenty-seven Point Sixty-three Point One Ten and Twenty-seven Point Sixty-three Point Eight Ten of the Lincoln Municipal Code to Allow a Dwelling Unit on the Same Premises as a Garden Center or a Farm Winery, Introduced by Gayler Baird.
So moved, second?
Moved by Leary and seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item seven C is Special Permit One Eight Zero One Zero, Application of Les and Patricia Meyer Doing Business as Capital View Winery and Vineyards LLC to Allow a Farm Winery Generally Located at Twenty-three Sixty-One Witstruck Road, Introduced by Gayler Baird.
So moved, second?
Moved by Leary and seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next are resolutions for action only. Item eight A is the Resolution Transferring Funds from Contingency to Pay for Six Additional Recruits for the July Police Training Academy to Provide an Earlier Availability of School Research Resource Officers, Introduced by Lamb.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Cindy, seconded by Carl. Um, can we just, we're going to move to delay all these. Can we move to delay all of them at once?
Sure, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Cindy, seconded by Jane, to delay these for one week until the fourteenth.
Okay.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Resolutions on First Reading are Items Nine A through I. Ordinances First Reading are Items Ten A through D. Our Pending List Date Certain, I will just note that all three of these items will come off for May fourteenth. Under our regular pending list, Item Twelve B, we have a request to withdraw this item.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. On Item Twelve E, we have a request to remove it from pending for public hearing in action on May fourteenth.
So moved? Second?
Moved by, moved by Cindy, seconded by Jane. Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Madam, uh, clerk, I would like to make one comment. On the public comment you listed into the, uh, open-mic nights, and you listed the April instead of the May.
Yes, we will get that corrected on the action sheet.
Do you want to make any announcement tonight, just to the effect on the days?
Yes, our open microphone sessions for the month of May will be May fourteenth and the twenty-first.
Thank you, and I move for adjournment.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We're adjourned.